For word prayer. Father, thank you for this day and we thank you for the opportunity to get together. Father, we lift up those in the community that have COVID. Father, we just pray for healing. Father, we also pray for all of our first responders and all of those at the hospitals that are battling this COVID, Father, that you keep them safe. Father, and just give us wisdom as we take up these actions, Father, in Jesus' name we pray. We're going to go ahead and move number nine up so that we can get to Russell and Kristin and Dr. Sarah Bennett back to where they need to be. It's a discussion of medical center ORMC COVID-19 testing request. Mr. Murphy?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The item for your discussion this morning is the potential partnership between the City of Odessa, Odessa, ORMC and MCH Health Systems for the provision of COVID testing, pre-COVID testing, and flu immunization for our community. I think you've seen my emails regarding the increasing number of COVID positive cases in our community. I really want to, if I haven't done this publicly, I want to thank Philip and certainly our folks at OFR for their work and the other partners of the COVID testing team. But the reports are from this group is that our numbers are increasing. Just as an example, this last set of testing, I think our positivity rate out of 270 was over 30%. So that is obviously an alarming number. And as many of you do, we listen into the weekly press conferences in which Dr. Sarah Bennett and the folks from MCH talk to us about the ever-present problem of COVID. Part of what we have done, as you all know, we did receive some dollars from the state through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We received approximately $6.6 million of that. If you recall, the funds require, the program requires that a percentage of funds, 75%, the bulk of those, be directed toward medical-type activities and/or payroll reimbursements. The other 25% is for other things like you have already done, the COBAT program, the assistance to the Ector County Independent School District, Niels von Wills and other small programs. So essentially, all related to COVID but non-medical. Out of the 75%, you have spent about $1.2 million, and that's primarily on the city's testing program, the purchase of equipment for the fire department, and additional PPE. As staff, we began to talk to the hospitals about this idea of continuing or expanding our ability to provide testing within the community. As it stands today, the city is only providing testing once a week. It's a great service, and I think we're certainly seeing a lot of utilization of that program, but we understand the need for greater testing access. As a result, as I mentioned, we talked to ORMC, MCH about the possibility of partnering with the city to be able to provide access to citizens who may want to have a test, really at any time that they need to have it. We did discuss this with Councilman Bryant and Councilmember Willis of the task force last week, and I've got both representatives from ORMC and MCH. At this time, I'd like them to come up and I'm going to allow them to talk a little bit about what this partnership would look like, and then we can talk about the cost. I will tell you that currently, you've got $3.7 million remaining out of that 75% portion. We could easily use that money up, Council, and reimbursement back to the city, but this is another consideration for you, and that is this additional COVID testing program. At this point, I'll turn it over to Russell and Dr. Sarah Bennett.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for your time this morning, and before we get started, I just want to give these Odessa Fire guys all the credit, man, for getting out there and running those testing sites, and thank you for what y'all have done and for standing in at that. I have my co-movie star here with me, Dr. Sarah Bennett. He's become quite popular these days, so we got a couple fan pages y'all can follow us. But we're here today just to talk about what city manager has discussed with a partnership between the hospitals and the city to get free testing to every citizen and not to, and to make that a little more available, which y'all have done so far have been fantastic and has been, in my eyes, heroic, getting people out there and getting this free tested. What we've discussed is how can we make that a little more available? And we have come up with an idea, and I think you've seen that, where we have two clinics that we have identified at Medical Center, one on 42nd Street and one on the West Side. Odessa Regional has a clinic located downtown, that our hours, just the hours of business allows for more time for people to get tested. So our hours are actually every day of the week, seven days a week, Monday through Sunday. So we would make that available, the free testing, COVID testing, every day of the week through those hours, which I think would help with bottleneck issues, everybody trying to pile it in at one time, that it's a little more convenient, they can come in and get tested, and it won't be a doctor screening, we're going to charge them anything, it is just going to be, hey, I can prove that I live in the, in Ector County, I live in Odessa, here's my utility bill, we've got it set up, they come in, we swab them, we send it here to the CPL, the lab, which we've already been discussions with about getting a big number of test kits in, and then we'll follow up with them through the appropriate avenues based on the outcome of their test, positive or negative. So we're not reinventing the wheel here, y'all have done a good job, we're going to kind of copy y'all, except we're going to put it in three or four different places. One question that we had from Willis the other day was a big concern about some of the residents that live on the West Side and their ability just to be able to afford gas to get across town. Medical Center, I told her, we have already talked about having one or two events during the time where we have a tent set up on that side of town, or we identify a building, maybe work with y'all to have it on a Saturday as well, just to make it a little more convenient to get people to come through. One thing the good doc brought up that makes sense is also to partner this with the flu shot, so you can come in and get a COVID test and your flu shot at the same time and make that available free, thanks to y'all, to the citizens here in this community. So we have been scrambling and talking to our COVID vendors, the COVID vendors, no problem. The flu shot, a little more restricted, everybody's trying to get flu shot. I think right now, we have about 2,500 flu shots available, I think y'all got about 600. They made another order yesterday, Odessa Regional did, Medical Center did too, to get another 1,000 of those, and so we can give free flu shots as long as those supplies last. But we will keep ordering those until we feel like we've reached the point that we've done a good job getting them ready to vaccinate. So what we're talking about here with the city and with the hospitals is the program, just the free testing, and now you're going to add free flu shots to that, and then you're going to have several locations that have extended hours through this community to be able to provide that to the citizens. So I think that is a good strategy. We've been working together with Mike and got some good numbers to give to y'all, but I do think that with y'all's vision and definitely with your care's funding, that this can be a program that can reach a lot of folks and not stress out any one group, not put, you know, any group people in lines. And we talked about is that drive-through, do we walk in? I think you're going to see it happen in multiple ways, but I think the biggest thing to take away from here is the availability of that is going to be so much larger, and I'll let you say.
A quick question before we get going tomorrow. Okay, quick question. What about retesting? I mean, if we have someone that's come through and they've tested positive or negative, you know, I mean, either way, and then they come back in a couple of weeks, are we retesting? Or do you think that would be a consideration?
Well, I mean, when you put the words free on anything, you're going to attract a lot of people. And I think one thing that our fire folks have done is they have a, done a good system where if people come through, you're keeping track of their names, that's one thing we talked about, it's just the sheer volume. But I think that's where you're screening when they're waiting in line comes into play. It was, when was your last test? Well, I was here Thursday. Oh, have you been firsthand exposed since Thursday? Any symptoms? No, I just thought I need another one so I come down. And that would kind of put a buffer in there, because we thought the same thing, I mean, you'd have somebody be come every day, you'd have to test it. I mean, that's crazy, but things happen, right? So I think that through just the screening process, I think we can slow that way down and keep that somewhat under control.
But it is possible then, like if someone had tested positive maybe a couple of weeks ago, and they are symptom-free, that they want to make sure before they go back to work or school.
Yeah, let me hand off.
Pass it off to the next star.
Thank you, guys, for having us here. We're privileged to be able to serve this community in this way. Great partnership opportunity and ability to just expand on access that we've already worked on so well for the community, so thank you for the consideration. So to answer the question, if you've had a positive test for COVID, you don't need to be retested for up to three months from that time that you've had COVID. That is the CDC's recommendation, unless there is recurrence of symptoms or new symptoms that you didn't have before. So the thought process is that you have some sort of antibody that probably protects you for about three months, so that's the cutoff right now. There's three months you don't need to retest if you've been positive. If you've been negative, obviously, you could have gotten exposed in that 48-hour period of time. That 48 hours is important because people can start to shed the virus 48 hours prior to them actually showing symptoms. So that's why we count that for contact tracing exposures as well. So if somebody comes in and says, I had a flu test last week, but I was at a large gathering that somebody was positive in, and I spent 15 minutes or more without one of us having a mask in the vicinity of that person within six feet, then that person is potential re-exposure and would then get another COVID test to make sure they still remain negative.
Thank you.
So this program, we have to have these money spent still by December 31st?
Yes, ma'am, that was not changed.
So what we're really talking about is November and December?
Yes, ma'am.
And what we spoke over, we have visited with both our teams, we think we can launch this on November 1st, give us another two weeks to kind of gather the troops, make sure, maybe do a practice run with our own folks just to see what that flow. It won't be perfect the day we open, I think the day this gets announced will have an influx, and as people understand that the hours go every day in multiple locations, that it can become more convenient, but yeah, we think we can have this up and ready to go on November 1st.
You've seen the COVID numbers sort of ebb and flow in our community, right? So we've seen it at its highest sort of in the beginning of July, mid-July, and then you saw it kind of drop off towards September, and then you saw it rise again, you see it rise again now in October, and the daily numbers that are being released are in the hundreds, not under the 100 in the last several days. So that's something for us to be concerned about. We don't know exactly when this will fully subside, but what we do know is the light at the end of the tunnel is the vaccine. Once we have the vaccine, then we can suspect that we will have reasonable control, as we've had with many other viral disease processes in the past. So we think another three to four months of this before the virus, before the vaccine is widely available to everybody, hopefully sooner, but at least that timeframe is what the scientific community thinks right now. So if you're looking at November and December, we think the utilization is going to be around 2,500 people or so between each month, so we're talking about 5,000 people in the next two months. You see my email in front of you and the process that we have to follow in the hospital to actually register the patient all the way till it's reported and advised on what needs to happen after that test result comes back. And you see the cost, for us, the cost is about $75 or so to pay CPL, and the remaining $75 is all that process that you see in front of you. For the flu shots, again, our cost is around $30 or so. For the shot, it's about $20 to administer the flu shot, that's how much nurses get to administer flu shots, so that's how we built it. So these are built pretty close to cost to us, so that it's not like, it is a service to the community, and that's kind of how we looked at it as well. So we're looking at about $200 a person if they get both the COVID test and the flu shot. Not everybody will get the flu shot because some have probably gotten it already, that's good, but if you just take 200 and then the 5,000, that's what we're looking at spending over a two-month period of time and touching 5,000 lives, which I think is well worth that cost.
And the labs are set up now where the results will come back in what period of time? Three days.
And we visited with the mobile lab, they told us they're prepared to do 100,000 tests a day, which we're not anywhere near that, but that's just the point there is that they have the capacity to do those tests pretty fast.
When we were talking last week, roughly the year, Dr. Sarah Bennett had mentioned something about tents. Is that still a possibility, like outside the church on the south side of town, that we can, I know Mayor was very, very interested in the possibility, making sure we reach those loads of?
Yeah, that was me, and that is commitment that we have, is that we want to have at least one or two tent occupants, whether that's in a church or in a parking lot, where if it's not feasible for somebody to drive, if they need to walk, we take that to them. Kristin has been in contact with some of the nursing schools, you know, they need contact hours and things like that to be able to swab and give the shot, so we're committed to doing that, and it may not be a tent, but it will be a different location on that side.
The one thing ORMC can probably add is that in addition to the Community Health Center, which is located fifth and Muskingham, that's the location that'll be basically 3:00 to 4:30 Monday through Friday. In addition to the week 12 hours a day, whole week, locate two locations that they have, we also have the truck, the van, that we've gone out and done testing at one of our local nursing homes when there was a large outbreak. So we can take that van to West Odessa, park it over there for a day, and do testing there as well. So in addition to tents, the mobile van is available, it comes refrigerated, so we can store everything that we need, including the flu shots, in the van, and be able to do those onsite as well.
We have also discussed, as you all know, we all woke up yesterday morning, it was a little, the temperature was a little different, and we have the Hessler Building, which used to be Bronco Chevrolet over here, to do a drive-through through there, so the staff can stay inside in the heater, and they can just drive through, swab and go. So we've had, between the two entities, we've had several good ideas, but I think you'd see a good array of coverage out there to all the citizens to do this time.
Great. Any other questions?
My mother is at Maxim Medical Resort. In order to get into system, I have to have, a test is good for four days, in other words, you got two a week, according to governors, edicts at this time, and that's based on the fact that Ector County's positivity rate is so high. The first time I went in to have a test, I've had two of them done, first time I went and cost me $50. Okay, I talked to Michael, said, Michael, is that a good deal? And he says, we need to be getting them to do ours. And what's the discrepancy that between $150 and $50? I know this is care's money, I get that, but...
Yeah, I mean, one of the discrepancies is the availability and the testing in that. The second is going to be the staff to make that happen. For example, at Medical Center, we currently have 27 staff members out due to COVID exposure or COVID positivity. They didn't get it at work, then I could have fun on the weeknights and the afternoons. And so I think when you start putting all that supply in the van together, sir, I think that that moves your cost. I think that that's directly related to that, and I'll let you.
I do have a clarifying question. The test that you had, was that an antigen test, a rapid antigen test?
I don't know, they swab my nose.
Well, it makes a big difference, big difference between a PCR test and an antigen test. An antigen test is also a rapid, the word rapid means you get the result back quickly in real time. So you can have antigen tests that are rapid, that are usually run out of doctors' offices, urgent cares, anywhere, doesn't need a lab. Then there's a PCR test that can only be run in the lab. But both our hospitals have the PCR machine in our lab that we can run those tests on. If we don't have enough supplies to run wide, large-scale PCR testing, we can have. So we still send out most of the community testing to CPL, who can do 100,000-plus tests in a day, because they have a much bigger lab. So to answer your question, the discrepancy in price could be that you had an antigen test which costs $23 to buy, we have those too, and you can do the PCR, which costs $75 to send out. As you can see, the rest of the cost is just personnel, as Russell was explaining. So the antigen test will give you one in five people that are labeled falsely negative. So you may get a negative result, but one out of five times, that's actually a positive that was wrongly labeled as a negative. Because of that 20% false negative rate is why an antigen test is not what we are proposing that we use for the community, because it gives you a false sense of security when you go in. God forbid, you know, you had it, and you turned negative, and you went in and gave it to everybody in the nursing home, well, that's not what we want to do. So we're doing all PCRs. None of those are going to be rapid, they're all going to take three days to come back because they're going to go out to a outside lab. Hope that antigen lasts.
Thank you very much. The other question along those lines, will we be processing insurance? The second test I had done, I had it done in urgent care, didn't cost me a dime. Also, I went to Sam's, got flu shot, didn't cost me a dime, I just handed my insurance card. And I know that costs money to process, takes manpower, will we be doing any of that?
No, sir, we will not. It'll just be straight up, you walk in, you show us you're good here, you're from here, we're going to swab you, we're going to shoot you with the shot, and you're out the door, and you're gone, and you're going to get on Facebook and tell the city council, thank you for being a forward thinker and making this available to more people.
I do want to make two clarifying points on that as well. Insurance has copays and deductibles. Usually preventative healthcare, things like vaccinations, don't have deductible or don't have copays, but if you haven't met your deductible, there are certain things that you'll still pay for, and there is still a percent of our population that doesn't have insurance. So we're trying to cover blanket, sort of everybody that needs the flu shot has access to the flu shot. It's good that you had it and you didn't get charged for it. The signature care test that you had, the urgent care test you had was probably, was definitely an antigen test, they cannot run PCRs in their location.
And I think it's important too, sir, that we don't want to discourage anybody from coming and getting tested or a flu shot, and that's why, well, you've got to have insurance to go down there and get it. But no, y'all are removing that from the equation. If you need, you think you need one, you've been exposed, you want a flu shot or a COVID test, come on, let's get it done.
Other question?
Russell, Dr. Sarah Bennett, one other thing that's very, one of the things that's very important, in fact, the council chooses to go in this direction, is data. So they like to know how many people are positive, how many of those were minorities, how many are from the city, how many are from the county. Can we anticipate weekly reports from you that we can then provide to the council, just so they can see the number of folks that are coming in and what their particular cases might be?
Well, I can guarantee you'll receive a monthly update from us when we send the bill over. But definitely, we can collect that data and send that over, I think that that's smart. A lot, you know, a lot of this data we processed as well through the county health department, so that's, it's right there too, so we can make sure y'all get that. If you're not seeing it, let me know or let Dr. Sarah Bennett, we'll make sure you got it. So it's out there, it's just a matter of getting our hands on it.
The health department does get that in real time, which means as soon as the result is back, it's reported to the health department, so they will have all of that as well. So we can easily send that to you guys as well.
Michael, is there a budget to put in the mail?
Yes, Mayor, so as I mentioned earlier, we received 6.6 toll from the care's funding. The grant requires that 75% of that be used on medical-type activities and/or payroll reimbursements, and you've spent about 1.2 out of that 75% side, leaves you $3.7 million. I will tell you that we can easily get reimbursement for our staff costs, so all of this could be spent. The real question is, is whether or not the council finds merit in this program and how much he would want to contribute to the program.
One other question, Michael and to whomever. So if we do enter into this, that is also going to kind of free up our fire rescue personnel, right?
Yeah, so we've got, how many more testing? We've got four more testing events that we are kind of obligated to do, but certainly after that, it would free up our guys.
Because is that, and Chief Alvarez might have to answer this one, when we have these testing dates, does that involve overtime and?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, it does. It's great overtime.
So this could help?
It certainly could. Again, it is, it's what Dr. Barrett, Sarah Bennett said, it provides greater access to get it out.
But it's not going to be this instead of that? I mean, we're committed to the other folks, so we're going to have that here regardless.
But if I prevent us from having to schedule any additional?
But we don't have any additional schedules, I mean, you know, we have these, the test done for the spring and now the fall.
What I was going to mention, Spot, is that the overtime is coming from the care's funding though, that we are charging.
So you set aside enough out of this, what we have the remaining amount to cover what our emergency services?
So we're going to obviously get back any costs associated with this testing event, any costs associated with the EEOC operations, but the reality is, is we can, we've got clarification from the funder, that we can use the remainder of this, this 3.7, just to cover our salary costs associated for operations in general. So that's one thing to consider, is that that's money that you could keep in the general fund if you so choose to, but again, it really is about whether or not you see merit in this program and whether or not you want to contribute to it.
Just wanted to make sure that we had, we had our costs.
Have listened, I would.
But I think this is a great idea.
I would think that we should plan on allocating a million dollars to this program. If we had more than 2,500 a month, which I don't think we will, but if we did have, you know, then we could look at, you know, if we wanted to expand that million, but a million would get us through November and December and would vaccinate 5,000 people, so.
Yeah, I think, just to give you, just to give you a number of what we're thinking, currently, we do over 100 a day already, so let's do, double that. So now you're giving 200 a day from us, seven days a week, so you're doing 1,400 patients a week through us times eight weeks, that's 1,400 times 80, you better have that right.
Get it from 80. Like it the rest of us.
And that's us, and that's not doing any other events on top of that, that's not including Odessa Regional, that's just through us, so.
Well, this at 2,500 a month, so I thought that was some sort of target.
Yeah, it is, and but if y'all want to set a limit, have it off, we can do that. If you just want to run it till it runs out, we can do that too, but I think when this breaks, that this has happened, that with the flu shot and the, we were right out of flu shots first, I can tell you that, that'll be the first thing. The COVID test kits, I think will be fine, I think we'll be testing arms off of that. But if y'all want to say, you know what, let's do a million dollars worth, if you want to say, let's do 10,000 tests, whatever you want that to be, we're flexible with that. Again, I think the influx will be the most, and then it will taper off until if something else spikes, and then you'll have a get. I'm sure the fire department has seen the same thing, when it's a, when people feel like the number's rising, there's more people that show up, and they feel like it's, you know, hey, this is tapering off, less people will show up. But having expanded hours, expanded locations, I think we'll drive more people to get this tested. So we serve your will, whatever your wish, we'll do whatever.
So Russell, you're thinking that these 2,500 encounters a month, 500,000 a month is a lot, you know?
Well, I mean, it's, today, with the way the positivity rate is today, I think we would love by this. You know, it shouldn't start, now we're in upward trajectory, right? I mean, we can agree it's up. If that flattens out again and starts moving down, that's going to change the way people want to get tested too. A lot of people want to get tested because they may have the flu and they think they have COVID, so that's a pretty mandatory test. One thing we talked about this year today was, so far in our COVID world, the weather's been pretty nice, and it's a lot of people who move out and get around. When it starts getting cold, and people start munching back together, here we go again, we're going to have another, we're going to have another situation we're going to have to deal with. I think if you go by this, that's perfectly fine. We put this together for, just for talking points and to get us started, but I do think that you're going to have a wonderful response to this, really it's a gift that you're giving to this community.
So if somebody comes into your clinics now to get their flu shot, and they have insurance, I mean, you're just coming in to get it, you would still provide that? Or, I mean, you're not going to tell everybody that comes in, now go over to this point and get it for free, right?
I mean, if they, if they show up at one of our other clinics and they're, let's just say they're for a different visit, let's say I'm there for a physical, and they ask me during my physical, hey, Russell, I see you haven't had your flu shot, would you like to have that? Yes, okay, we're going to give it to you here, and we have their, we're only going to go through the free program if they go to the designated location. So if they're at another location, we're going to treat them like a regular patient, so we're not going to say, hey, don't take it here. So, we're not gonna say, hey, don't take it here, but I'd send the city a bill for fifty bucks, and I hear a girl or there is a, we're gonna keep that running the same.
I have a question for Phillip or Michael. Will it cares, money, i- is it okay if you said for flu shots? It's not really.
Yes, sir. We, uh, we asked that question specifically to Tina, who is the overseer of the funds. And the answer was yes, you can use it. They see this as a way to help offset the impacts of COVID nineteen.
Again, sir, I think that's a valid question, if the flu shot is something we wanna lump into this, that's cool too. But our thought was, uh, if you got them there, you might as well knock it out for everything you got them there for, so. Because if not, I mean, like, somebody with flu, and I'm, I'm no doctor, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn a couple of nights. If you think you got flu, you're gonna think you have COVID too, you test differently. So you might as well, uh, have some preventive, uh, preventive maintenance, uh, like, uh.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, it's actually not, it's a matter of discussion, uh, so we talked to the task force. Uh, we wanted, uh, certainly Russell and Dr. Saravan to talk to you about this. If you, uh, we can put this on the next agenda and, uh, it's, um, I'm getting the impression that the council would like to do it for the two months at a million dollars. So we will bring an item that will allow you to approve that, mayor, and, uh, give, uh, myself the authorization to sign any agreements that I need to with the, with the hospitals.
I'm with it, I just wanted to also, you know, have a little bit of an opening. If, if this does go as well as we think it will, you know, a million dollars may not be enough to cover it. But I think that's gonna be. And I only said a million because of this letter, but it's not, that's not a magic number. Yeah, I mean, to where we at least have, send it in place that if, if the need be and we have the funds available, I certainly think that this is a good.
That's a good point, and that's something what Dr. Saravan spoke before. Uh, as recently as yesterday, we've both started reaching out to our vendors that supply us with the flu vaccine. And if we get to, let's say, a million dollar cap and we need more flu, well, I'm, I wouldn't, we wouldn't order as much if, if we knew it was just going to our place. My opinion to you guys would be, I'd say let's run it for two months, from November first to New Year's Day, run it through there, whatever it is. I mean, we, we know what, it's pretty simple math, divide this out by fifty, divide it by a hundred, you know what kind of number? We can watch that number, and if we start getting close to that, we can dial it down. But if not, I think it'd be smart, and I think it'd make it easier for us to get the supplies in cost-wise, knowing that, well, if I'm gonna order another six hundred or six thousand flu shots, I'm gonna have something there to be able to get paid for that as well. But again, let's see, this is y'all show, we just, we're just here to do the work and we're thankful that y'all gave us this opportunity to partner up with y'all.
We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Sounds great. So, and we don't pass this motion until next week, that's the twenty-seventh. Can you still be ready to run November first?
We're ready today.
Okay, all right, good, that's excellent.
We're ready today.
Gentlemen, thank y'all so much. The hospitals have just been phenomenal, and, uh, thank you.
Well, we wanna, we wanna thank y'all for your, for your vision and your, uh, and your leadership in this, and we're, we're happy just to be a supporting role. Um, our, our relationship with your city manager and all of his staff, most importantly, these firefighters and what they do with the police force, we're in this together. And, uh, whatever our role is in it, we're ready to, ready to sing our verse, and we thank y'all for allowing us to partner up with y'all.
And this is our job.
I'll just say thank you, and, uh, you, you guys have the letters, so my cell phone number's on there. If you think of any questions that you need to ask before you actually make a decision, uh, feel free to call anytime to discuss further as well. Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I wanna consider the purchase of traffic signal equipment. Mr. Phillips.
Good morning, council. Um, this issue item is to replace, uh, traffic signal cables at my signalized intersections. Um, this year I want to, uh, replace fourteen signal cabinets and keep three in spares in case of emergencies, which tend to happen. Um, this will be for two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, and I'm buying it off the by-board state contract. And I can answer any questions, hopefully.
None of them have the artwork on them.
I don't know, I'm finalizing the list and then I'll get with Randy, just like we did last year, yeah.
Is this within your budget?
Yes, yes. I, I don't have the list yet.
Now, do they wear it out, or is it just?
Uh, yes, uh, after, after, uh, some of these are over twenty-five years old, so they've, they've served their lifespan, yes.
And some of these get taken out occasionally too.
And, and that's why I'm keeping the three in spares, yes, it, it happens.
All right, you're very good. Yeah, thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Uh, next, consider the purchase of holiday decorations, Mr. Patterson.
Good morning. We do have some showing talent, I brought Hannah, I'll be careful. Show everybody.
Who is Hannah?
That is our new deputy director of Parks and Recreation. How, do you wanna address yourself to, I guess you've met everybody else, did you?
Did we got you?
Not all the ways.
Oh, I'm, I'm Kyle Benedict, new deputy director of Parks Recreation.
That's the main town.
The, um, agenda item itself is actually the hotel motel funds that we have had allocated, that's gonna pay the remainder of the fifty percent that's due, once it is, um, completed and delivered. I wanted to get this agenda out there, so we will probably have delivery in the next couple of weeks, we're already putting up, uh, Christmas decorations now. And this will allow us to pay the remainder of the bills, that we have a lot of decorations, and I did wanna give y'all a little bit of a hint. That is what I designed for this year's, um, and, mayor, this is not my hair.
I don't know, looks a lot like it.
Looks a lot like it. That's what the, uh, feature design is this, this year, it's ice crystals, and I got the inspiration from the opening of Superman in the movie. Where the big crystal room and the, the first Superman, so, and this year, the drive-through, I thought was gonna be even that much more important, so that's a twenty-foot tunnel. Those large ice crystals are thirty feet tall, they cross each other, so it's gonna be pretty spectacular, it really is. And, uh, the designer and the manufacturing company, I think it's about to pull their hair out, but, uh, we finally got something that's gonna be really cool. We've got some blue lights in it, and then everything else is gonna be white, white lights.
So that's a little car on that drawing, you wouldn't show that little square of us?
That is, that's a car. I think it's an alien next to it.
Steve, you would anticipate that for this year, is that correct?
Oh, it's, yes, it's only this way.
Would you talk about how that looks different than last year in terms of, um, Starbright Village?
Just particularly this way?
Well, no, just, just in general, given the COVID.
Um, what, what we're going to advertise, and we've had a lot of discussions, and Phil and I have gone round and round trying to, uh, look at the situation. We are gonna widen the trail to over twelve feet wide, as wide as we can get it. We'll have signs posted and, and we're gonna strongly recommend, um, of course, social distancing and wear a mask. Uh, it's gonna be very difficult for us to manage, we have two hundred thousand people that go through the, the displays every year. We'll encourage course dropping, and we're gonna advertise that, but we'll have big signs posted and plenty of room for people to socially distance. We, that walkway's only eight feet wide, so we're gonna extend it out further. We had discussed having one way and then people go out. Unless, we have a lot of people that's onsite directing each person to go that direction. It's gonna be very difficult for over a month to have that many people, personnel as well as volunteers, to staff that, to ensure people are gonna go in and out and around. We looked at different strategies for people to come into the park and park in a certain area. Everyone is so used to the typical locations where you drive in and drive through, it's been traditional like that for many, many years. So we figured out our best bet is put signs up, large signs, Spanish and in English, at two different locations, in the trail, at the entrance, and about midway. Make sure that we have plenty of width for people to stay away from each other.
So we are gonna let people walk through, I thought you said we're gonna be dragged through.
I got challenged, um, because people are saying, I can walk through Memorial Gardens. I can walk over San Jacinto Park, what's the difference in walking in the parks outdoors now than later? And so that was a really tough decision, and, and taking that type of direction from the public, that was hard to answer that question, because you can't go over to Memorial Gardens and you can walk a circle right now. And so this is less than, right at a mile. And, um, and we'll make it wider than what we have at Memorial Gardens. The argument is too, we have a lot more people attending over at Starbright Village than we do Memorial Gardens, so we'll see how it goes. If everybody is packed and they're close together, we can stop it. And especially if the COVID count goes up, even as it's rising now, if we have real big numbers by opening date, we, mm-hmm, and we'll, we'll have to.
So is the Christmas tree lighting and the big gathering gonna happen that starts it all off in?
Virtually.
Virtually, okay.
Yes, we, uh, we have a new media partner, Channel Nine, it's gonna be our media partner now. And, uh, we're, um, right now the game plan is to host in First Basin, since they are our big sponsor, in their new lobby, and the mayor will do the countdown and, um.
The mayor.
Yeah. Whoever's mayor, at that time, but we'll, we'll have everything at First Basin, and it will be virtual, they'll cut in with choirs that they've pre-recorded, and also some dancers, and, and do a program. Channel Nine did a great job on, I guess, the rehab center when they did the telethon, a lot of that was pre-recorded and they had the talent, and we're gonna do the same and, and have no attendance. As, it'll be hard, I know, to keep it from gathering out there when the tree is probably gonna be turned on, but, um, we won't have any type of ceremony at, on-site, it's gonna be virtual this year. A lot of planning for us.
It's just such an incredible attraction, and people come from all over, it's just something we can be so proud of. And with COVID this year and people being so isolated, I think if anything, it's more important than it's ever been.
I agree, I agree very much, so, and we've had numerous phone calls, lots of people inquiring about what are you doing with, no, uh, can do with all the facilities that we normally plan. The big addition this year to all of our decorating, thanks to, uh, a great donation from Southwest Bank, if y'all have not been by Buffalo, while on Memorial Gardens, we have a pink fountain in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, uh, uh, we have new RGB lights in that fountain, we can use our phones and we can program those lights to do all kinds of different colors. At Christmas time, they'll go red, they'll go white, and they're gonna go green. When we have St. Patrick's Day, we'll make it green, it's already kinda green anyway, but we'll make it light.
Greener.
Greener. Um, also, we've, uh, partnered with Southwest Bank and, and the great donation, every pole out there, all fifty-two light poles, are gonna have tinsel or garland with C-seven lines every six inches with a big red bow on top. So the reflection of water at night of all the, uh, each one of those light poles around the water will be fantastic, and we, so. I very much appreciate the support of Southwest Bank in that donation.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I agree, consider a resolution accepting the donations from Chevron to the fire, Chief Alvarez.
Good morning, mayor, council.
Morning, morning.
Uh, this is a consider a resolution to accept the donation from Chevron, you know, for the last several years Chevron has been donating us about ten, ten thousand dollars. And so we're asking that we accept this and approve this, so we can appropriate the necessary funds for fire rescue. Normally what we do with these funds is that, you know, we'll buy equipment, but in the past, what we, what we like to do every year to recognize our personnel is at the end of the year, during Christmas, we like to purchase gifts for all of our entire staff and, and our firefighters and, and our fire marshals division. And normally what we did is that we'd have three separate bunches, one for A shift, one for B shift, and one for C shift. And that's when we would give out our, our, our gifts to them, so. This is some of the things that we use for, as part of this donation, but, uh, the other time, we'll, we'll certainly buy some equipment for that, and we certainly wanna thank Chevron for always being socially responsible. You know, they've always been, uh, part of our, uh, always supported our organizations and, and our community as well, so anyways, this is what we have in front of you today.
Is it for ten thousand?
Ten thousand, yes, ma'am.
And you'll see that next week.
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Also, if I could, I, I, I would just, uh, like to take this minute if I could, Mr. Monroe, and, and tell the, the city council and the mayor that, you know, I just wanna commend you for your leadership and your support, and, you know, especially when it comes down to, you know, I, I listen to the care funding, and exactly what you're doing with that. And so I wanna thank you for being accountable and being very, uh, discreet in, in how you're, uh, allocating these funds. Uh, we benefited from this, these funds, the care funds, but when I say we, as a fire rescue, I mean the citizens have benefited from that, because that, that equipment really goes for them. So I just wanna commend you for your support and the leadership that you have shown this community, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, chief. Next, consider the purchase for the construction of a new metal building at Fire Station Five, Chief Jorge.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, let's see here, this is for consideration of the purchase and construction of a new metal building at Fire Station Five, for the cost of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, this was put in our supplemental request last year, so we already have funding for this. Uh, it has been delayed a little bit because of COVID issues, uh, but we do have, uh, currently, uh, a bid and, and a, uh, worked up a complete, uh, plan from Gordian, uh, to start construction as, as soon as we can. This building will be, uh, twenty by thirty, our panel wall, our panel walls and roof building. Uh, it also has some concrete work, the concrete work, uh, did add a lot to the cost, because in this particular area, Fire Station Five is, uh, we do have to add actually a little bit taller than, than normal, because it does flood in that back area, so. Uh, that's why that cost is, is a little bit expensive. Uh, the building will be used for several things, uh, we identified last year that we do need some more storage at a few of our building, at a few of our stations, this particular one, uh, was, uh, first on our list. Uh, will house a lot of our personal protective equipment in there, uh, we currently house it at, uh, Central Fire Station in one of our smaller, uh, rooms, but it's just getting filled up, uh, with the addition of Station Nine. We feel that's gonna be thirty more employees that we're gonna have to continually, uh, have, uh, personal protective equipment for, so, uh, we'll, we'll do that. But we'll also house one of our EVs, our EVs is the, uh, the, uh, uh, six-wheel, uh, off-road vehicle. Uh, we use it out there in that particular station because of the bike park, uh, previously this housing out there. Our firefighters are basically using their own pickups to try to get down in, into those areas, you know, we often have, uh, people riding their bikes and break their arms or legs or have back issues, and so, uh, to get them out, we were previously just having to try to use a pickup. So we've moved it, our EV from Central Fire Station out to there, we need actually a little more room to house that, so that's what this building will be useful.
Any question? Thank you. Thank you. Where would we put this building?
Uh, it's gonna be, it will be directly behind, uh, Fire Station Five, so.
That's on East Ridge?
Yeah, on East Ridge, it's gonna be just, uh, north of the Fire Station, it's kind of between Fire Station and the bike park itself, um.
Where the, where the refuge containers are now, there's cardboard, paper containers sitting on that side of the parking lot, is that correct?
It's, it's gonna be, not, not where the, where the, uh, where, where the dungeons are, it's gonna be directly behind it. It, it's basically where our firefighters park right now, just off of that padding.
And the reason I bring it up, and this is not really important, although if you're bicycler, it's important, if you go to that bike park on a weekend and the weather is pretty, that parking lot's full.
It is, yes, sir, yes, yeah, and so, we're gonna, we, we've maneuvered it, um, basically all the way to the, uh, it's not, it's not all the way to, to where the bike park is, it, it's just off the padding, uh, where our, our firefighters park. And then all the way to the east side of that area, so most of the parking is still gonna be there, uh, we, we maneuvered it there specifically for that, because we didn't wanna try to take up a lot of that.
How large is the?
It's twenty by thirty. It, it does have a little bit of a ramp, but that ramp is gonna kind of go into our parking lot, so that we wouldn't take up a, a lot of that, because it does get very busy back there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, my parish, that's the, uh, first one's considering annual renewal of a little P three-five radio system down the support.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
This first one, of course, is the P twenty-five radio system, this is the yearly maintenance that we pay on it, um, it gives us our support for software and any equipment that may go down. Um, this is gonna be for the time period of October first, twenty twenty, through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And that amount is gonna be for four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that amount is gonna be for four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Everybody good? Next, uh, I'm so concerned approval of the Microsoft leasing, uh, licensing agreement.
So this is our licensing agreement that we, uh, pay yearly. This covers our operating system and all of our licensing for email, everything Microsoft. Um, this gives, um, our, our licensing to the software that we use, Microsoft Office and the things that you guys use every day. Um, and that amount is gonna be for three hundred and ninety-three thousand, thirty-four dollars. And by the way, all of this is budgeted into my year budget.
Uh, I'm so concerned renewal of the annual HTE, Superium software support.
So this software again is software maintenance for our HTE system, the Naveline system that we're working in conjunction with, um, Munis. Um, that is going to cover us from October first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one for the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Okay, everybody good? I make consider renewal of the annual software maintenance support for Munis ERP system.
This would be our last bill that I'm talking about today. This is again for the Munis system. This is the new system that's replacing HTE that we're working in jun- conjunction with. And that is going to cover us from, I believe, April to April of twenty twenty-one. Um, and that is in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and nine hun- one hundred and thirty-three, nine, nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Is this Stan's angle or?
I'm sorry, it's August, August twenty, twenty to August twenty twenty-one.
Everybody good?
We're gonna start going, you told her. You spend a lot of money in there.
Don't tell anybody.
All right, this concludes our meeting. So, we are dismissed. Thank you, officer.
Thank you.